Public participation with non agenda items. We're going to start out first with Chelsea Alkire. Chelsea?
Hi, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Chelsea Alkire and I come to you not only as a dedicated educator, but as someone with deep lived experience in the work we're here to strengthen. For the past thirteen years, I have worked in ESL and special education, beginning as a bilingual aide, then as an instructional assistant in a special needs classroom, and for the last ten years, nine of which in the district as an ESL teacher. This work is my calling. I've been honored to be nominated for the 2026 Ohio Teacher of the Year, and I've also been a speaker of the Ohio TESL Conference, where we gather to learn, reflect, and grow as advocates for multilingual learners across the state. With that background, I want to say how much I appreciate the board prioritizing professional development that includes diverse organizations. I want to especially thank Board President Bosso for recognizing Mr. Ed Kennedy at the last meeting and the remarkable work he's done leading the ESL department here in Southwestern City Schools. Mr. Kennedy's leadership, compassion, and vision have made an immeasurable impact on both students and educators in our district. His recognition at the last meeting is well deserved and deeply appreciated. But as you continue exploring partnerships for professional development for the Board of Education, I would like to recommend a few local and national organizations that provide high-impact culturally responsive training. A few local organizations that would be great for the board to strengthen some of their not-so-strong areas include ETSS, Ethiopian Tabah Wajido Social Services, which offers trauma-informed, culturally grounded training for educators working with immigrant and refugee youth. And as a side note about this organization, I had an ESL student at Finland Middle School in my eighth grade class in 2017 who recently graduated from Otterbyne University, who now works for ETSS. The Ohio Center for Autism and Low Incidence is a leader in inclusive education for students with disabilities, offering practical and adaptable strategies. CHRIS, or Community Refugee and Immigration Services, provides school-based support and training focused on refugee and immigrant experiences, mental health, and educational access. And the Curwen Institute at OSU is renowned for research-driven equity training centered on race, opportunity, and systemic barriers. A couple of national organizations you could look into are the National Coalition on School Diversity, which advocates for school integration and educational equity and offers professional development on culturally responsive teaching and systemic equity. The TESL International Association, which is a global leader in advancing the expertise of educators in English language teaching. They offer professional development, best practices, and advocacy. And the Council for Exceptional Children. It focuses on improving outcomes for students with disability and gifts and talents through special education training and support. Partnering with these organizations would not only support our educators, it would directly impact the experiences and outcomes of our students, especially those who are multilingual, disabled, recently arrived, or historically underserved. This work, making our school more equitable, more inclusive, and more human, matters. It requires more than a one-time training. It takes sustained investment in our students, open minds, and a willingness to see every student in their full humanity. So again, thank you for acknowledging the leaders among us, for seeking out the right voices, and for making it clear that we are moving forward with purpose. I truly hope you all look into some of these organizations and associations and find at minimum one or two that align with the beliefs the stakeholders in the district have shown you are important to us.
Good evening to the board, Mr. Banks, and thank you for letting me speak this evening, and Mr. Garza, sorry. Say the best words. First, I wanted to say and recognize Happy Pride Month to those who celebrate. And I would like to speak on transparency. It seems as though this board does not understand what the word transparency means, despite most of you having run on that as part of your platform. So the definition of transparency in the context of business or governance refers to being open and honest. It also promotes accountability. Before I get into some examples of the lack of transparency, I also just want to say, you notice I have a red shirt on? There are a lot of us with red shirts on that are not part of SWIA. I feel like SWIA and the teachers have been being blamed for actions that parents are doing in the community. And so I just want to put everyone on notice right now that that's not SWIA, and it's not teachers, it's us, it's me, you can blame me. But there, someone keeps putting anonymous posts blaming SWIA on Facebook, and I think that that's a really bad look for the board. Hiring Omar Turazi in the first place, and then pretending like it was about a personnel issue, was not transparent. Denise Steele already admitted on the record during a meeting in July of 2024 that when you voted to give Turazi a contract, she had already reached out to him before she was even sworn in as a board member. You didn't have multiple attorneys to select from. You didn't share their qualifications. You didn't have a public discussion. You didn't even follow proper parliamentary procedure. When we have repeatedly asked, what is Turazi doing to earn $9,000 a month? We are told he is advising. When we request records of what he bills for, they look like this. They are entirely redacted.
Unethical.
And then in July, he decided to give him a year-long contract at a rate of $9,000 per month, so he no longer has to provide invoices. When Turazi's one-year contract expired in December of 2024, the board just quietly rolled it into 2025. You didn't have any public discussion. You didn't vote. You didn't have transparency. And there's no possible way that you didn't violate Sunshine laws by making that decision, because at least three of you would have had to have discussed it ahead of time. This is unethical and possibly illegal. But Turazi's still here. Maybe not today, I don't know, is he earning a speech today? He's still here, and according to the district expenditures, he's still being paid $9,000 a month. You also left the Vouchers for Ohio lawsuit, meant to recoup money for public schools that is being diverted to private schools through vouchers. No vote, no public participation, no public discussion, no transparency. Same thing happened when you decided to leave the OSBA, Ohio School Board Association. We noticed it, we held you accountable, and then you rejoined. That was forced transparency. Omar Turazi and members of the Board of Education are using attorney-client privilege as a shield to conduct public business outside of the scope of Ohio's Sunshine laws. That could be a violation, likely a violation, of the Open Meetings Act or the Public Records Act. In Ohio, attorney-client privilege does allow some confidentiality between a public board and its attorney. However, it cannot be used to conduct regular board business in secret, and it does not apply if the communication is not truly legal advice, as in if it's strategic or political in nature, it doesn't apply. While truly privileged communications can be withheld, general district business or discussions involving board action may not be privileged. Serial one-on-one communications, sometimes called daisy chaining, like for example, if Omar calls all of you individually before a board meeting to talk to you about what's going to be happening in that board meeting, that's called daisy chaining, and that's violation of Sunshine laws. Sort of like if a certain lawyer calls each school, remember right before the meeting. Use of an attorney as a buffer to give legal cover to deliberation, as like perhaps Mr. Turazi takes a position to, let's say, Ms. DeAngelo Steele, and then maybe to Ms. Martindale, or Ms. Peterson, and then maybe to Mr. Bosso. Also violation of Sunshine laws. Until you actually start practicing transparency, we will be here to watch, and we will hold you accountable.
It's less on attorneys and more on what matters.
There sure is a lot of noise and hysteria in this room today. It's so conveniently what our school board president said out loud last month, and then our vice president so conveniently had the audacity to put in writing on a petition that a student in our district put out there because he felt threatened by your actions to join an association that promotes segregation, not only of students with disabilities, but also English language learners. And if any of you, the majority of you sitting up there, continue to believe that a diversity of opinions coming from those associations is appropriate, you're more out of touch than you realize. If the majority of you the noise and hysteria that you think we are causing is going to cause us to lose a levy, and it's not because of your own poor decisions, your lack of transparency, and your lack of ability to actually answer questions from any stakeholder in this room, you're delusional. After sitting through this past year's visioning session, I heard a majority of you say you want similar outcomes from every school. You want equity. You want more opportunities for students with disabilities as they age in our district. You want inclusion. You want different perspectives from organizations that promote private and charter schools, along with an inexperienced attorney who has no educational law experience, and I would beat that with a, you know, but it is here. You want diversity. You want DEI, but you want it your way, that fits your conservative values, that you so conveniently outlined in your superintendent wish list. Forty-eight percent of this district is not white, and at any given time, there are eighty-plus languages spoken within the walls of our schools. When a parent asked our school board president at a meeting he attended, she said, what are we doing to hire more direct care staff that don't just speak English? The question was not answered. When asking our school board members what initiatives we're taking to hire a more diverse population of teachers, because representation matters, I connect with the counterquestion of are we hiring them because they're qualified, or are we hiring them because they're black? I never specified black versus white. What I said was diverse. Each of you approved the hire of new staff and employees. Do you not realize that each position has a certain set of qualifications to meet, to even be considered for an interview? All of which are district, state, or union requirements or a combination of all of them. You must be qualified in order to be considered. We can say that our grifting attorney did not have to face the same scrutiny in order to be hired. Our policy committee, who nicely omitted stakeholders as parent to be a part of that committee, opted to eliminate our legislative representative policy because Neola said it gave all of our board members the opportunity to be a legislative rep instead of just one of you. Thank you, Dr. Luxer, for explaining that when our own vice president couldn't. I would, however, like to point out that with this board, whose most recent decision to join these different school board associations or advisory organizations that do not prioritize free, quality, public education for all students, we cannot trust that you are acting in the best interest of this district. Who is holding you accountable? It certainly can't be us when we're here in this room that you never answer questions in. Who is advising you on what to say and to whom? Oh, hmm, that's right, Turazi is. The person that stands to benefit from this district's failure because his family owns and operates at least one charter school in North Columbus. The bigger behold this district gets in, the more money he stands to gain. Most of this boils down to ethics, morals, and last but certainly not least, transparency. It seems that for the majority of this board, segregation, lack of representation, and your conservative values are at the forefront of your decision-making process. If you would like to state otherwise, now, in this meeting, you can. The board discussions point of our agenda would be the perfect and appropriate time, especially considering Robert's Rule of Order, to do it. So go ahead and put it on record with a plan, your motivation. We've all been waiting weeks for these answers. Maybe that will eliminate all of this noise and hysteria.
Hello, I'm Katie Suckey, and this is still too high for me. I am quite literally standing here tonight because the teachers of this district saved my life. I attended Southwestern City Schools for thirteen years, and in some of my toughest teenage moments, I was met with teachers who cared. Lately, I've started seeing references to bad actor teachers, selfish teachers, greedy teachers, and that saddens me because my experience could not have been more different. Blaming teachers whenever something goes wrong in education is not new. But this rhetoric hurts not just them, it hurts our kids. We've been hearing cries of indoctrination for years without a shred of evidence, let any proof, let alone any proof that this is widespread across public education. These claims often relate to culture war issues among adults, like gender identity, something that's not even mentioned in our district's curriculum. I've heard teachers joke, if we could indoctrinate anything into them, it would be the importance of wearing deodorant and coming to class on time. The truth is, a teacher is meant to be a safe person in the life of the child. Concerns raised by students on any topic require empathy, not judgment. That's what it means to see the whole child and not their test scores. There has also been a narrative pushed by some that teachers' unions are inherently greedy and selfish. Bound by professional codes, teachers often can't speak up in their own defense, but I can. The teachers in this room here tonight are not here for themselves. I'm sure they'd much rather be home, feed up after a long year. Instead, they're here advocating for the best possible teaching and learning environments. They're here to put their students first, and they deserve better than having to buy their own pencils. This is far from the first time teachers have been thrown under the bus. I remember writing my very first letter to the editor of the Southwest Messenger in 2003. Other letters had brutally blamed teachers for low test scores when it was glaringly obvious even to a fourteen-year-old that the state's funding formula was to blame. Now, as the state threatens further cuts, the president of this board made a statement at last month's meeting that attempted to blame the potential for a future levy failure on the noise and hysteria. I disagree. If that happens, it won't be the teachers or the community to blame for speaking up. It will be the fault of this board for their mismanagement. Teachers have never been the cause of a funding crisis, but every time, they're the scapegoat. Meanwhile, they are the one ingredient that this district cannot survive without. They dedicate their lives to our kids and do the best with what they have, while the decisions of the state and of this board are beyond their control. I'm sure everybody in this room can think back to a teacher who had impacted them. For me, there were many, but one in particular. She was my social studies teacher at Brook Park Middle School the year after 9/11, when our country was suddenly at war, which was very confusing for a thirteen, fourteen-year-old child. Yet, no matter how many Teen Newsweek articles I wrote opinion papers about, I never could figure out how that teacher felt about any of it. That's as it should be, and that's as it still is. What I did know was that she cared about us. She made me want to show up and be my best. She made me smile even on the most difficult days. She didn't just help me learn, she helped me survive and thrive, and I was only one of her hundred and twenty students that year. You want our district to be a destination district? It all comes down to teachers. Imagine how many lives are touched by teachers in our district each year. That's why it infuriates me to see them scapegoated when they are literally, in reality, out here saving lives. What I'd like to see instead is a deep and genuine appreciation and support for our teachers. Listen to their needs and their experiences. A card or donuts for Teacher Appreciation Week is nice, but true support means showing up for them on all the days that they show up for our kids, and that is every single day.
Wow, how do I call those four? A little differently. President Bosso, Vice President DeAngelo Steele, members of the board, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garza, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Megan Payne, that William Gordon O'Learyman. I'm a parent of an amazing sixth grader at his intermediate school. For those of you that do not know my background, I grew up as a conservative in Athens County, which is not exactly the most conservative county in the state. I'm a proud product of both the public education, a public educator, and a Republican county commissioner. Throughout my post-secondary education, I often encountered discrimination based on diversity of thought. I'm conservative in Athens County, that's discrimination. While studying at a higher university, I spoke before the university president regarding the discrimination I received in non-political science classes, merely because I was conservative. I did the same in law school. This board and its members, I think, are well on record that they want to encourage diversity of thought, and I thank you for that. There's nothing more diverse in thought than including and accepting neurodivergent viewpoints. Twice-exceptional learners provide so much value to a classroom. Also known as, and I will refer to them going forward as 2Es, twice-exceptional students are both gifted and have a learning disability. The Ohio Department of Education has been encouraging schools to stop letting 2Es slip between the cracks. In fact, the Ohio Board Association's Education Law Committee is in a meeting which is entirely about twice-exceptional education. I will note that your advisory council is not a member of the committee and was not at that meeting, I was. Science and inexperience, for those of us that are 2E parents or 2Es themselves, and in my case, both, are not, that twice-exceptional learners are often diagnosed later in life or later in their education years. They're often seen as either not trying or unable to focus. They're labeled bad behavior students. Let's keep it real, their giftedness often masters special ability, and their special ability often masters giftedness. I will say, our teachers have been great with acknowledging mine. Thank you, Mrs. Allfords, I know you're here tonight, we had a great year. These students provide unique perspectives in our world, valuable insight, and usually the ones who think outside of the box. 2E students are often eliminated from gifted programs because in favor of well-schooled and well-behaved children. These are the students and children that grow to change our world. Famous 2Es include Helen Keller, Stephen Hawking, Mae Jemison, the first African-American woman in space, and many mathematicians, physicists, scientists, and engineers. Tom Holland, who my son is like gay, I'm like Spider-Man. Richard Branson, Simone Biles, Tim Tebow, and John Lennon, all had a learning disability. Some of history's greats are believed to have been neurodivergent 2Es, including Thomas Edison, Albert Einstein, Leonardo da Vinci, Marie Curie, and Thomas Paine. I think that's where mine came from. Those are the voices that change our world, and from what I've seen, you're silencing them in our district. I turn now to Ms. DeAngelo Steele's response to the Student-led petition on change.org she published May 22, 2025. However, this response and this board's stance and assistance on joining this organization have shown me the exact opposite of wanting to encourage diversity of thought. First and foremost, this was a student-created petition. Ms. DeAngelo Steele's unthoughtful response actually stated, that's focused on supporting our students and the positive work being done. How about supporting that student's right for an opinion and thought? What message does this send to our neurodivergent student who took it upon themselves to try to participate in civil debate? It wasn't that they were opinion-valued. Instead, the term hysteria is being lobbied around by our board in response to a student. Our schools are supposed to help our young people become productive members of society by giving them an education. Our society has clearly lost the art of civil debate, and this board and this situation is not helping bring it back. We're supposed to listen and respect all viewpoints. We don't have to like them, we don't have to agree with them, but we need to respect the others' right to have them. It's not hysteria when the very tenet of an organization will take our 2Es out of the gifted and general classrooms and put them in a special room merely because they have a special ability and that requires special needs. This is not going to benefit any of our students or our community. I urge this board to take more time before making these snap decisions on these organizations. Think about it from all angles. Think about all students and all voices. The hysteria you referenced isn't just the crazy leftists. I am standing here a conservative and a libertarian, and I am telling you, some of us are raising exceptional children, and we are not going to go quietly into the night and let their light be dimmed or letting our voices be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now, items for discussion. Anybody have any items for discussion?
I do, yes. One thing I would like to discuss, and I wasn't sure if Garza was going to be here or not, Mr. Garza, for this conversation. I know Garza and I have talked about this before, about having a board-led financial committee. That would be something more of like a budget review committee that meets twice a year. So if the board is okay with that, if that's something that we want to discuss, maybe put an agenda at another meeting or so, that'd be great. But I think it'd be great to help with transparency, to have a board-led budget committee is something that this district hasn't done in a very long time, and it's something that I have been discussing with Mr. Garza for a while. And I think it's beyond pastime to have something like this. My view, my thoughts on this would be to do something where it involves the board and members of the community, things of that nature. I know, Mr. Banks, you guys had a board financial committee, budget review committee in Worthington when you were there and thought it went really well, and I appreciate your input on that as well. So that is something that I would like to discuss for other topics that we discuss.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, can you?
I was about to say, I can actually touch on that. Me and Hugh actually have been hitting this topic consistently for the past couple months in our meetings, and that is definitely something that is top of the priority list. We had pushed it back some months on getting it started because of Hugh helping with the advocacy down at the State House for federal funding. And so we just paused for a moment to allow for it to be, him to have the ability to focus on that, and at that time, that was very important for Hugh to be able to go and speak on behalf of that matter. But that is something that me and Hugh do have planned to bring forth forward on an agenda item. Hugh, is there anything else on this for that?
Well, I think the best course of action would be, I can come up with some examples, some other districts who go around the area, bring those forward, have a conversation about them, and then we'll go from there.
Sounds good, put on the agenda for next month then.
Yes.
Where's the community?
And, yeah, not to respond to all the shouting and everything.
All the noise and hysteria.
I'll go back to what I said before, too. I think it should be something that involves the community. So a board-led committee with community involvement, and there'll be an application process and things like that. I know that's what some other districts are doing. Garza, that'd be great next month if you have that prepared for us.
That is correct. That is still me and Hugh's plan, before I can answer, that it will be a board-led committee. We have not made any side decisions that that would be changed. So that is still going to happen. I actually do have something to say. And when I have to say something, and you know I gotta give a disclaimer, that means that I'm probably going to say some things right now. That some is- that means that I'm probably gonna say some things right now that some is gonna like and some may not like. And all I'm gonna ask is for everyone to remain quiet while I speak because I want everyone to hear what I have to say because I think it's important. First, I've had the chance to process our last board meeting, which was May 19th, and a chance to take a pause. And sometimes pausing is what I call is a good thing needed. And there is a couple things from that last board meeting that I do want to address. The first one, the use of the word segregated when describing a group of students in relation to disabilities, IDPs, or 504s. Although we have selected to explore another school board organization that chooses to use this word in their articles or statements, I am asking that we, as Southwestern board members, do not use this term in reference to our population of students. We all know the use of the term has a negative connotation to it. We are now decades ahead in time. We want to refrain from applying another population of individuals in this category. We, as the board, can do better. I am a part of a board, so you notice I said "we." We can do better. There was a statement around future levy failures. We are not at that point right now, talking about a levy. Doesn't mean, I'm making no promises, y'all know I'm over finances now. We won't need one in the future. But let's change the narrative around that, okay? If we fail a levy in the future, we fail the levy together. We fail it together. It does not matter if the percentage to approve is one amount and the percentage that is majority is against. If it fails, we fail together. We all receive the same percentage, which is zero, if it fails. We are all in it together, okay? And if that is the outcome, we have to come together to determine what is the solution for our students. That is when we come together to determine the solution. We have a chance to change the narrative for Southwestern. And all I'm asking is that we start working to change that narrative, okay? And that is all the two areas I really had to get on May 19th's meeting.
So tonight on Agenda Item P, the Board of Education authorized our treasurer to issue a public notice regarding retire-rehire. In order to comply with the deadlines the Columbus Dispatch has, Ohio Revised Code, as well as the start of school, it may be necessary for us to modify our summer schedules in order to meet all of those deadlines. So if I could just review, our next meeting is June 25th. That meeting, the primary purpose of that meeting is to close the book, so that's a financial meeting, but I'm sure it will have a full agenda. July 10th, we have a meeting. That meeting typically is, primary use is for hiring. But in order to meet the Ohio Revised Code, we will need to have the notice issued in the dispatch and then have a hearing. It is possible that if we have that hearing on July 28th, and then the board could vote on those individuals on August 18th, that we would meet those deadlines, and since two of the employees are bus drivers, that would put them on a bus for the start of school on the 20th of August. So I'll let you discuss that, but in short, it would entail adding a meeting on July 28th and August 18th and canceling a meeting on August 11th and August 25th in order to get those folks hired.
Any member want to move that forward to change those meeting dates? Do we have a second on that?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Can I get a roll call for that amendment?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Mr. Bozo?
Yes. Thank you, Randy. Moving on now, we're going to go into executive session. It recommended the Board of Education adjourn the executive session in accordance with Policy 0166 to conference with an attorney regarding pending and immediate court action and prepare for the conduct or review negotiations and bargaining sessions with the public employees. Can I get a motion to go to executive session? Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Liskini. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. Martindale? Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Bozo?
Yes. Everybody's more than welcome to stay. I don't know how long we'll be in there, but thank you for being here. Have a great year.